Present.
Here.
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 All right, and I'm gonna make a motion that we make just a few amendments to the
agenda. So we're gonna move item G, N, and O, that's referendum update and review of question draft, financial update and approval of the vouchers, up to A, B, and C, and then shift everything else down. Ms. Grindell needs to leave in a timely manner, so we're gonna push her things up, and we've already cleared it with everyone presenting. Thank you for being flexible. It shouldn't be very time-consuming. So I'll make sure the motion that we make those amendments to the agenda, and I'll need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll be moving on then to item G, the referendum update and review of, or now A, question draft.
All right, board members, in front of you, you have a packet of hard copy information here. On the top sheet, you have from the Quarles &amp; Brady Law Firm, a draft of what official referendum ballot would look like. So on the first section, you see a notice to voters, gives them some instructions and some guidance. The second section, of course, being the instructions, that, just the steps that they need to take, if they're having issues, or how to vote yes on a ballot, and how to vote no. And then you can see the draft referendum of one question. So I'm gonna give you a minute to take a look at that, and we'll field any questions Questions on that draft question?
It's, I'm sorry, it seems a little unclear as far as what we're, seems to me as though you're just stating that there's gonna be demolition of the old middle school gymnasium and nothing else. So there's not really a clarification there as to the improvements or things we're gonna do within the middle school, within that 16 million. That's...
And I'd loop you back into kind of the center of that paragraph, where it talks about cost of school improvement projects, including district-wide infrastructure, safety, security, and ADA improvements, academic and cafeteria additions in the elementary school, and demolition of the old middle school gymnasium, and acquisition of related furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. So that...
Okay. I'm just not sure that everybody is going to process it as that.
But I think because there's not gonna be any additions added on to the middle school, everything that's gonna be done at the middle school falls within that.
Is within, falls within the infrastructure?
Yep.
Okay.
That's why the elementary academic and cafeteria additions are spelled out separately.
Are spelled out at the elementary?
Yep.
Okay.
A question that I would have for the board on this is revolves around the portion of this that starts with demolition. Are you feeling demolition of the old middle school gymnasium is descriptive enough, or would we do better to call it the small middle school gymnasium, or...
I think, I think so.
Small.
Is there a commonly-used term in the community that people refer to it?
Yep.
Yes.
The small gym.
The small gym.
Or we used to. That's, that would be a pretty easy edit, I would imagine. We'll loop back around with the bond counsel from the Quarles &amp; Brady Law Firm on this, and, you know, to Mrs. Olson's observation, I think that, you know, providing voters with the information that they need to make an informed decision while they're in the, at the polling place is important. I don't think the referendum question would be where you do that. Hopefully, we would be able to meet those needs for voters in our efforts prior to voting day.
Okay.
If the board were to adopt this resolution. If, if no more questions or insights on this, this draft ballot, and again, just a quick review, you know, we're planning backward from your January regular meeting, that would be as late as you could go to adopt a resolution. Okay? That's as late as you can go and meet the statutory requirements to get it on April ballot. I'll have the bond counsel make, make the revision to this, and we'll get it back to you for your review again in, at your regular meeting, December 17th. At that time, you would be in a position, if you wanted to adopt the resolution, if you felt like that, that framed up what you're looking at, then you could do it at that time. Some, and, you know, I think some important updates regarding tax impact coming from RW Baird, and I'd ask Mrs. Grindell to kind of walk you through that part of the packet.
So this is an updated, updated information that Lisa Voisham provided to us. What you'll notice changes for this packet compared to the other packets is that this focuses on one amount, 16 million, rather than a range of numbers. Another change is that the interest rate has gone down from 4.5% to 4. And then, I believe everybody has seen the example of the referendum borrowing, those were included on the past ones, as well as the graph that shows the historical and projected levy. Are there any questions? And so this, you know, just to go into more detail, a little bit more detail, I don't wanna get too far into the weeds on this, but you'll notice that it still has zero impact on the levy. And why that is, is because we anticipate paying interest-only payments on this new borrowing until the old borrowing falls off. And once that old borrowing falls off, in, I believe it was 2027, then we would go to principal and interest payments on the new, the new borrow.
Is that a new concept? I don't remember.
That's the concept that we've, we've discussed from the onset of, of this discussion from the financial side. You're, you're currently paying a little better than 3% a year debt service on the high school building, and we know that that continues for seven years. So this, this, the interest-only payments upfront is a way to be able to do an issue while paying off the issue that, that you passed some time ago without having a, you know, a detrimental effect on the levy for taxpayers.
Okay. And will that, is that interest rate fixed, then?
That, that would be a, a fixed interest rate, correct.
Okay.
How would it change our payments?
So if you flip to that second page of her information, you'll see she gives a projected levy amount, and it, it wouldn't change the projected levy that, amount that we would for our debt service. It would fluctuate a little bit, but we anticipate that fluctuation would be absorbed with the increase in property values, and they're projecting a 2% increase in property values. I believe she states that on the first page. So that, that slight fluctuation from 3.9 to what we levied this year to that 4.2 could be absorbed within that. And that's where you'd see that little to no impact on the mill rate. And I say little to no because you never know for sure, there might be a small impact, but it's not going to be large at all.
Okay. Any questions on that? I think that's great news for our taxpayers. Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll give one more chance for any questions on the draft question as well. Then we'll go ahead and move on. It will be moved to our regular meeting. Thank you. We'll be moving on to item B, the financial update.
The financial update that the board was provided is for October. So as you can see, the beginning balance was approximately 2.1 million. We took in about $130,000 in receipts for the month, leaving us an available amount of about 2.2 million. Total expenditures for the month were just shy of 1.5 million, leaving an ending cash balance of $756,360.17.
Thank you. Any questions on the financial update? Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to the approval of vouchers. Any questions on vouchers this month? Do we have consensus to move them forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Those will appear next meeting. Thank you, Mrs. Grindell. We'll be moving now to item D, which was aid to student staff and community recognitions. Those, nothing tonight, they will appear on our regular board meeting. Moving on to item, I'm gonna do this all night, we're at...
Why don't you just say the next item?
The next item will be the FFA National Convention presentation.
Okay, so I'm Kaitlyn Genski. I'm the Spooner FFA president this year. And earlier, around Halloween time, Jackie Rosenbusch and I went to Indianapolis for the National FFA Convention. Okay, so, um, we, this isn't, okay. We arrived on Tuesday, and we first went to our hotel, which was actually super cool because it was a retired train station, and there was like a regular hotel section, and then Jackie and I, and Mrs. O'War and her husband stayed, we all stayed in a, like, old train car. It was super cool. In the middle of the night, you could like feel it rumble because some of the hotel was still an active train station, so when the trains came in, you could like feel them come in. It was kind of super cool. Then on Wednesday, Jackie actually went to national convention because she was in, competing in the National Employment Skills LDE contest. And she did well, but she didn't, she wasn't a finalist. She got a silver, right? Yeah, she got silver. Um, and then that day, we also got our national award photos. We attended the career show and expo, and then my favorite part was the Old Dominion Concert. They were super good. You actually learned a lot. On Thursday, we went to the opening session, and we heard a keynote speaker. His name was Bob Goth, and he was just super inspirational and was really funny. He was a little odd, but we're a bunch of kids, so that's how he keeps us entertained. Then we went back to the career show and expos. It's like huge, so there's so much to see. And then we made our way to the second general session, and we watched the National Chapter Awards. And then I was, or our chapter was recognized for being a stu-, two-star chapter at a dinner that night. On Friday, Jackie had a breakfast for her employment skills. That's where she was awarded her silver medal. Then we went and got our chapter and state photos. We went to another convention session where we watched the proficiency awards, and Jackie earned a silver in sheet production. And then on Saturday, we headed home, the long drive. Okay, that's all.
Do you want to share what the National Chapter Award is, because you filled out the application?
Um, it was, it's a really long application on, like, how, like, what our chapter does. There's like three different sections, and you have to say how you like improved in each section and met the requirements. And then you're just like judged along with all the other chapters in the nation, and they tell you how good or bad you are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
And thank you for representing Spooner so well.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yes. We appreciate being able to see this as we talk about it and approve it and have information on it. So thank you for taking the time to put this presentation together and giving it.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, you'll receive an update from the three principals and I on the 2018-19 school and district report cards. And just a quick bit of background on these report cards. They started in 2012 with school report cards, and the Department of Public Instruction did this as part of a higher level of accountability as the No Child Left Behind legislation came to an end, and the Every Student Succeeds Act began. So in 2012, school report cards came, and they were joined by district report cards just a few years after that. In the next slide, you will see a comparison of the district's 2017, 2017-18 report card with the 2018-19 report card. Kind of a small slide for those that are viewing it on the screen, but I think most important to note is what's happened in this district with the overall ratings over time. And I'll get into a little bit more detail about what comes with that. But, wow, you look at just a few years ago, where this, the Spooner Area School District was a district that rated two stars and meeting, meeting few expectations. So in a few short years, where you've had a lot of great work taking place district-wide, this district has jumped ahead significantly on this. Back when, when I was interviewing with you to be considered for this job in the district, I said, "School improvement happens classroom to classroom. No one's gonna come in here with one fell swoop and, and make things better. The ability for us to articulate a vision, and the hard work happens in those classrooms every day." And I think what you're gonna see tonight is that reinforced time and time again the great work that, that our teachers are doing out in the classrooms, that our leaders are doing as they lead this effort in each of their buildings, and the way that, that parents and families have really engaged in the learning process here in Spooner. This is definitely a success story, and it's something that, that we can be proud of community-wide. I'm gonna break down the elements of this report card for you through the magic of technology here, and for, for those that are watching remotely, I'm sorry you're not able to see this, but I'm, I'm gonna talk about the different parts of the report card real quickly. First of all, the overall score, what you'll see on report cards is an overall score, and the very high score is 100, and it has a, has a star rating with it as well. The Department of Public Instruction is always really careful to say, "Well, don't equate 90 to 100 with an A, and 80 to 90 with a B," and so on and so forth. So that's not how it's broken down. But you do see that there are a number of different ratings where schools and districts can score. And again, our district is an exceeds expectations district, and that is something that we can really be proud of. Just a, a quick bit of information and the elements of the report card, or the format of the report card, so that we're sharing data in a similar way, so that you're receiving, you're receiving reports on the same attribute, attributes and what that data looks like. So the report card breaks down, we look at student achievement, and it's our school district versus the state. And on that, you can see that we do continue to lag behind, although that gap is decreasing, that we, we are behind the state average on achievement. However, when you take a look at academic growth, this is where our district has really shined, that our students are really showing great academic growth across the district, and we're confident that as these efforts continue, that we're gonna see that achievement move forward as well. Closing the gaps is an incredibly important score here in this district, and you can see that we, as a district, lag just a little bit behind the state, but closing the gaps is important. At this level, we've had the conversation numerous times over the past years, how we know that we have groups of students in our district that are not learning at the same rate as others. We're working to close that gap. You can see that there's progress on it, but we know that we continue to have to work on that. And the two groups that, that are the, have the greatest track record, and we know that we really need to continue to double our efforts down, are those students that come from socio-economically disadvantaged families, and those students that receive special education Bear with me here, a technical difficulty, nothing we can't fix, though, certainly is the case. On-track, post-readiness are both very important pieces. As we take a look at that, we look at important areas such as graduation rate in the high school, attendance rate in the other schools. We take a look at the third grade reading test scores and the eighth grade math reading scores. Those are some key indicators. This is a particularly important category, the priority area weights. If you'll recall, three years ago, the state, the state rolled in a value-added formula, and it was a formula that I won't even attempt to try to break down for you here, other than it was a University of Wisconsin-developed formula that took a look at how scores and ratings are weighted in the state, and a big piece of it was those, those closing the gap areas, percent of students that come from economically disadvantaged households, things of that nature. So in our district, very heavy weight, there I go, again, hold on, a very heavy weight is put on growth, academic growth. So academic growth carrying more value in the formula as it's applied to the Spooner Area School District. So you can see that about 40% of our score is based on student growth versus about 10% on, on student achievement. The student engagement indicators are very important, in that we take a look at important areas of a school experience for kids, such as absenteeism and high school dropout rates, and you can only lose points in this, you cannot gain points. And you can see as a district, we've lost no points in that, so, so that's very good. And we take a look at the district information, which will be, you'll see off to the right here. This breaks it down by our grades, our enrollment, between district mobility, we know that we have a little better than 5% of our students that, that are transient in nature, that, that their home situations require them to move with some regularity. Take a look at the ethnic breakdown in the state, and the student groups are particularly important and part of how the priority weights are established. And in this, we see that we run a little higher than the state average on students with disabilities, 14.4. Socio-economically disadvantaged, better than 56% of our students are identified as socio-, socio-economic disadvantaged learners, and we know that our rate of English language learners is quite low in our district compared to those in the region and in the state. I will be followed by Mr. Hopkey. However, I want to give you the opportunity, do you have any questions on the district report card? All right, Mr. Hopkey.
Boy, take it from my experience, this is the laser light here, and if you press another one, it's gonna move this slide. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Wonderful. It's a great evening, or something like that. All right, moving on. So just getting a recap of some of the information for the elementary school, a lot of it's gonna play into what Dr. Hazlum was talking about, comparing 17-18 school year to 18-19. Some of the notable items is just the overall score, and the last year, we were at, at the exceeding expectations at 74.2. This year, we're at 72 point, or 70, yeah, 72.3, which is just below that threshold as far as meeting versus exceeding expectations. So it's just a slight drop of 1.9, but we'll talk more about that as to some of the indicators that lead to that, okay? Some of the other notes here is the, the students with disabilities. I know it's hard to see there, but last year, we had 14.1, and this year, we had 17.2% in the building, not actually participating in the, the testing or some of the results that we're gonna talk about. So we had a slight increase, but a lot of that is attributed to speech and language, students coming in with speech and language disabilities, and then they transition out later on. So, anyway, getting into it, so a lot of the information that we're gonna talk about for the actual scores is based on the forward test, and right now, third and fourth grade students are the ones that participate in the forward exam, and that's where we get the student achievement, the growth, closing the gaps, and so on. Okay? So first of all, the, the student achievement, I know that from, from the scores, we are slightly below the, the state average. I know we, we did see a negligible increase when it comes to our ELA achievement from last year, but still doing well. And then as we take a look at our three-year trend, we saw a slight positive increase in our achievement over the past three years. And, and part of this is that we've seen increases in both the proficient and advanced scoring on the test. So we've got students that are doing better across the board as far as ELA is concerned. As far as math achievement, we're, we were below the state average, which was, we were 2.9 points below. We had a negligible increase. As far as our three-year trend, it's been pretty stagnant. It's been pretty level over the past three years. The area where we're seeing the biggest gain here is definitely that student growth. Just one note here with the, both the, the student growth as well as the closing the gaps, there's only one grade level that is surveyed in this data, because we've only got the fourth grade... got the fourth grade that has taken it more than once. So the third grade doesn't get calculated into both the growth and the gap, closing the gap, okay? So taking a look at this with our ELA, so we were definitely above average, 39.7, so 6.7 points difference that we were actually above the state average. As far as our three-year trend, it's been pretty decent, we've actually seen a really decent growth. I know in 16-17, we had a 25.4 points as far as our student growth, so we're doing well as far as growing our students. And as far as math, we're above the state average again. We get it here, yep, we're slightly above the state average, slight decline from last year, but still doing well. And over the the three-year trend is what we're seeing is that it's been slightly on the negative side over the past three years as far as our growth is concerned, but still outdoing the state average. Moving on to closing the gap, we're we're below the state average as far as closing the gap. The the three-year trend, what we've been seeing is we've been seeing a slight decline over the past three years, but I would say over the past four years, the four years that the forward has been taken, we've actually seen a slight uptick. I know that the 16-17 school year had a nice bump up, it was pretty high and that kinda showed a negative trend over the past three years. And then as far as and if we take a look even deeper with that, with our economically disadvantaged students, it was a very negligible decrease. And then with our students with disabilities, we didn't have any information on that simply because the threshold for getting information on students with disabilities is you need to have at least 20 students that have attended the full school year and we didn't have that that took the test those two years, okay? As far as math achievement gap, slightly below or below the state average there and I would say that our growth there has been fairly or has been negative over the past three years. There's there's been a slight increase as far as our economically disadvantaged students, but once again, it's it's hard to pull out the students with disabilities because we don't have data on them because there was less than 20 students in that population. Moving on to the on-track and post-secondary readiness, there are two items that are taken into consideration for the elementary school. One is the attendance rate, which we were sitting above the state average at 75.5 versus the 74.5. And then our ELA achievement for third grade, couple of points below the state average as far as performance. So getting into the priority areas or priority weights, what we're seeing as far as the weights, student achievement is only attributing to 6.4% of our weight. Our school growth is 43.6% of of our actual scoring for our overall report card. And then on-track and post-secondary readiness, it's 25%. One thing to note and it kind of attributes to some of the the difference in our report card scores from one year to the next is last year, our economically disadvantaged population was actually over 64% and we showed a decline to 62.9%, which impacted that weighting. We actually had more weight on our school school growth last year than we did this year. So that that economically disadvantaged students, that's that's how it factors a little bit into the calculations, so. Any questions at this point? All right. So as far as our action plans and getting after making some of the changes here, so what we've done so far or doing this year is we're implementing a new math resource that's a K8 resource. We're continuing with our PLC process where we're unpacking our math and ELA standards and making sure that everyone is understanding what those standards are and we're building the rigor around it, getting that depth of knowledge for both the math and ELA, having collaborative planning time that is including regular ed and special ed staff members. Because one thing that was noted in in some of the data there is we're not necessarily closing the gap the way we should with our our students with disabilities, they're still performing at that basic and below basic level and and that's definitely an area where we want to target more. And that gets into some of the other things that we're doing as well as far as refining the instructional benchmarks and outcomes for both regular ed and special ed teachers that they're collaborating so they all know what the standards are. The learning time during staff meetings, so we're making sure that we're building in more professional development in some of those meetings. Collaborative teaching time, what we're doing, it's it's a trend that has shown positive success for special ed students is doing push-in model where special ed teachers are delivering instruction in the in the regular ed setting. So the students aren't being pulled out, they're getting the same instruction, same curriculum and then the special ed teachers are modifying and enhancing that instruction. And then lastly is implementing new intervention resources for those struggling learners. All right, any questions?
Question about as you move toward more of the push-in for special ed.
Yes, ma'am.
Since that might be new practice for many teachers.
Mm-hmm.
How are you supporting teachers in making that change?
As far, so I know some of this is is getting that collaborative time and part of this gets into that what we've started this week is making sure that special ed teachers are involved with our regular ed teachers in that collaboration time and then also making sure that they're getting to any professional development to help them go along. I know they've got some registered for a CISA course on December 18th just to help build that, so so it's helping.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Just a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Implementing new intervention resources for struggling learners.
Mm-hmm.
Has that been since this beginning of this year and where did those resources come from or what are you utilizing for that?
So some of these or a number of them have been implemented this year. I know one big one has been Lexia, which is a more of an online resource for our ELA instruction and yeah, it's it's been it's been very beneficial and students are really getting into learning more and enthusiastic about learning. I know that we took a lot of time last year to really research what interventions are out there to make sure that we were getting good, solid, research-based interventions, so.
Okay, and then this is what you've implemented this year.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks. I will be followed by the middle school.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna walk us through a similar format that Dr. Aslan and Mr. Hopkey walked us through. So the the first one is taking a look at our overall score from last year to this year. So in 2017, 2018, we had an overall score of 72.8 and from to 1819, we had an overall score of 75.3, which is an increase of 2.5 points, which bumps us into the exceeds expectations category. And this is just a huge celebration for us and it speaks to the hard work that each person in our building is doing. I'm gonna flip to the next slide here so you can see this better. The students in my building that are tested are grades five through eight in ELA and math, but then in eighth grade, they're also tested in science and social studies. So if we move to the student achievement piece, which is in the priority areas on the top, top of the middle slide, for English Language Arts, the state average was 32.6 and SMS scored just above the state average at 33. And for math, the state average was 29.1 and SMS scored above the state average at 30.5. So from last year to this year, our achievement data holds steady, we were down a little bit in ELA and up a little bit in math for a total change of less than a point. If we move to the next section down in that middle part under school growth, similar to the district and to the elementary school, this is the category that is given the most value out of the value-added model. So we're actually weighted, 41% of our score comes out of this category. So you can see for English Language Arts, the state was at 33 and we scored at 38.7 and for math, at 33 and and we scored at 36.8. So like Mr. Hopkey stated before, the number of students that qualify for free and reduced lunch affects our score in this area, in this area, and we did see a 3% increase of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch from 17-18 to 18-19. So as with the district trend, we continue to do well in in this category of growing our students. When we take the next one down, when we look at closing gaps, in English Language Arts, the state average was 36.7 and we scored just below the state average of 34.4. And in math, the state average was 37.2 and we scored just below the state average at 34.5. So we saw a small decrease in the percentage of students with disabilities and closing the gap and we saw a 3% increase in the students that are identified as economically disadvantaged and a very small increase in the students that are that are identified as English language learners. So we know that the closing the gaps with the students with disabilities and students that are economically disadvantaged continues to be a focus area for us, just as Dr. Aslan mentioned during the district overview. When we look at the on-track and post-secondary readiness, we're scored in two areas here. The first one is attendance rate and so we are just above the state average in terms of attendance. And then also our eighth grade mathematics achievement, we had a jump in this from last year. We had a .7 jump, so seven tenths of a point jump from last year and we are now one tenth of a point below the state for our eighth grade mathematics achievement. All right, when we talk about our priority weights, I know I already mentioned school growth is is our highest rated percentage. Last year, it was weighted at 39% and this year, it's weighted at 41%. So you you can see that reflected up in the school growth portion of the report card. And for student engagement indicators, which would include absenteeism and dropout rate, we did not lose any deductions or did not lose any points there, we met the met the standard on those. Are there any questions about this part before we go into our strategies?
Right, I don't have a question but a comment. The whole formula in weighting portions of the report card concerns me and some of what we do and how we approach this because we do data digs then to see where we can improve and we're focusing on the score, but sometimes I feel like the potential to lose sight of students and learning at high levels is possible because we're, it's still working on portions and bringing students up to meet a standard, but I love that student achievement grew and is over the state average even though that accounts for very little of our overall score. So that's very encouraging to me and I'm so excited to see that. On all of it, the growth is amazing, but that piece of it, because it's so much less reflected in our overall score, is a really encouraging thing to see.
And even though our students are are growing a lot, we still obviously want to see every student achieve at high levels and so some of the strategies that you'll learn about next actually address that achievement piece and how we can keep moving forward there.
Thank you.
All right, so in order to work on student achievement, we're implementing a new math resource and recently, we received a $10,000 grant from DPI to help us with the implementation of this new resource. We're actually splitting it with the elementary school, so our math teachers, K8, are working together and they're working through the process of identifying, you know, what do we want students to know, how will they, how will we know that they learned it, which is which are the two, first two key questions of the PLC process that you've been hearing us talk about. They also are working through not just math, but all subject areas are working through identifying essential standards if they don't have them already, benchmarks and outcomes, and then unwrapping standards, which basically just just means gaining clarity around what we want students to be able to know and do and defining it. Other things that we're doing are increasing, well, I'm gonna skip back up, we're using our staff meetings instead of a time to to talk about logistical things, we're handling that in other communication forms and we're using our staff meeting times to really dig in and learn together and build common knowledge and language around the PLC process so we can, we learn together and then we do that, we do the work together. And then in addition, we've increased our supervision in the hallways and in the lunchroom and at recess in order to give increased times for staff to build relationships with students, but also to support students in making good decisions. Any questions about the action plan piece?
Can you tell me a little bit more about what you're using the grant for with the implementation of the new?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so they just had their first work day, I think, right before break, right, two weeks ago? Yeah, thanks, Pete, the Wednesday before break. And they worked on creating, and Pete, jump in if I'm if I missed something, but they did a lot of stuff in the first day. They started unpacking the standards because they they already have identified their essential standards and so they have started unwrapping them and talking about learning targets and getting crystal clear about what each one of those standards means to them and what they expect their students to do. They created a crosswalk of what students, like I could actually use it when I go into a classroom and if they're working on this, over here, it tells me what I would see the students doing and what I would see the teacher doing. So they've identified those kind of key areas of what it looks like, sorry. Does that, does that help? And they're also.
Giving the staff time to to work with the new.
Yes.
Resource.
Yes.
With the standards and so on and.
Mm-hmm. And working on that vertical alignment piece is really, is really huge because giving those math teachers time, you know, with representatives from grades kindergarten through eight, all in the same room, the conversations are very rich around what does this look like in kindergarten versus what does this look like in eighth grade and seeing the progression of how things, well, seeing the progression from how they move from through the grade levels.
I'm gonna jump in on this one as well, just to reinforce just how critical that professional training is. Here in the Spooner School District, by working collaboratively, we can do anything here, but we can't do everything. So when we take those new resources and we unpack those standards and we're able with great clarity to be able to answer question one in the PLC process, what do we expect students to know and do, then the really great teachers that we have working in our classrooms every day can say, here are the parts of that new resource that we really need to focus on to impact student learning best.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right.
How is this fitting into their daily schedule? Because I know it's asking a lot of staff to collaborate and take time out of there.
With the the grant money and the or the PLC process, which.
I would say PLC is more what I'm, because, well, yeah.
So right now, at least at the middle school, our our collaborative teams meet at least once per week, but we have a formal once-per-week time where they're looking at student data or looking at common formative assessments during the school day.
Okay.
So grade-level teams or our elective teachers will meet.
Yes, thank you.
And can you tell me how how you're going about assessing what students need what to make sure that everybody's teaching to the same?
So we use the data that's available to us. Teachers are using their assessments from within their classroom. We do look at, you know, STAR or unit tests, chapter tests, exit tickets, whatever, whatever they have that. they have that shows evidence of student learning or evidence of students not learning, then we use that to discuss and plan for student learning for the next day or the next unit.
Okay, great, thank you.
You started the increased supervision in hallways beginning of the year.
Yep.
Have you seen a big difference since last year?
So, yes, we've seen a decrease in the amount of office discipline referrals. And when, when we go through the middle school, school improvement plan tonight, it's one of our goals. And so, I'll give you the exact numbers then.
Cool, thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. I will be followed by Mr. Scherz, our high school principal.
Seems like if you had to hear from me regularly here, try to change up the way I communicate maybe or something, see. So, I'm going to approach this a little differently because I'm more of a meat and potato kind of guy. So, I want to give you, when you look at the data that we've, just like the rest of our group here, if you look at the high schools' data, it's, it's pretty exciting. We're one of the, excuse me, got to keep moving here, this thing, going the wrong way. Am I going the right way now?
Now you're going the right way.
Excellent. There we go.
There you go.
Okay. See, I just need a little help. But if you look at what happened last year and the difference of report cards, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing. And we were recognized by the state of one of the high schools that showed the most improvement. And that's why the little asterisk is the indication there of our growth because it was over 10 points. But the question is, and what we need to look at is, is why and really, more importantly, what are we going to do to continue this process? Because again, what makes me nervous about this is, is that when you look at the mathematical process that they use, if they change it, how does that affect us? And what does it look like next year? So, what, the things I want you to focus on, if you, if you look at the areas that we talked about or that are identified in this slide, just like Dr. Asland started out with, we, we look at the academic portion, which really in our, in our, at our level is ACT. And of course, my concern when we use Aspire in ACT is, is it's really a college indication type test. So, it really doesn't measure all the things that our students know at the high school level. So, but that's what we're given and that's what we're going to use. So, we do focus on that process. But again, like the other schools, what are we really looking at is, is what I see the successes. And it's our student growth in that process. When we talk about a school district that has about 50% free and reduced, how do we meet the needs of those students and help them academically? But also, how do we take our high flyers, our students that are, that are at the top when we talk about student achievement, how do we continue to challenge them and create a well-rounded high school experience for all students? And it was mentioned as we talked, and I heard it from someone on the board as well, how do we help all students achieve at high levels? And really, when we look at this process, you can, you can look for yourselves, the gain that we've, that we've created in all these areas. I mean, in every area, we were either at the state level or above the state level. But again, as I've challenged the teachers in my building, how do we get, how do we create our own measurements? How do we get to that point where, where, you know, being, is it, is it a good thing to be at the state level or do we want to aspire to be better? And really, that's our challenge. And what we've done, so with that, in talking about that, I guess I'm going to pause right there and ask you if you have any questions on the specifics of some of the scores you're seeing in each of the areas. Because I want to get to the specifics of what's our next step.
You raised a point that I was going to ask later, but this might be a good time to put it in. Those state expectations are not very high. If you're looking at meets expectations of, you know, 63 to, I can't quite see, 75, that's still a start, a lot of students that are not meeting expectations. Looking at student achievement, the state average is low 60s, which to me doesn't look like a very high bar. Mid 60s for school growth. Seems to me that the state expectations are not very high. And so, how does, how does that fit in with their goals? And why are the state's expectations so low?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so to answer your last question first, you know, I can't answer the question of how the state sets its expectations. I do, as I said on the front end of this presentation, do want to caution with the state rating scales, it is a scale that uses a score of 100 as the top, but the caution is that you can't equate that to what you'd see typically in grading in schools where 90 to 100 would be an A, 80 to 89 a B, and so on, so-
And also, doesn't equate to, like at 75, 75% of meetings and-
Right. It's, yeah, these are, these are scores, not percents. So, yes.
So, adding to that, if you look at like how they use the ACT to measure us, they use basic, below basic, above, and that kind of equation of where students are. So, that kind of gets to where, where my conversation starts is, is how do we take those students that are below basic and get them to basic? And again, when we look at the scoring system, that's really what's going to show the most improvement at our high school. But keeping in mind, we also have to address the needs of all students and the students that are achieving high, how do we continue to challenge them as well? So, when we go, when we look at this process, and I'm going the wrong way again. There we go. Okay. And again, looking at, you know, the, the two subgroups that we really have, and you have to have more than 20 students in any one category to create a subgroup. So, our two subgroups are economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities. So, how do we take those groups to start with and raise the bar in the process of their success? So, you know, as, as I continue, I want, I want to reflect back at those two subgroups, but I also want to take a look at our students that are excelling. Because our curriculum does have, have lots of challenging components for students. For example, we have, we offer 11 credits, English credits in the high school, college credits in our, in our own system through Mr. Thornley's classes, okay? And we, and again, we have lots of students now taking college courses on our site or Barron County as well, okay? So, again, we're certainly addressing the groups of those students that, that need more. But going back to our students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged, going the wrong way again. We've come up with several things that we want to do as a high school to, to address these needs. And the first one is our rail system and our, and how we use that system. So, we're, right now as a staff, we're, we're in the process of researching that very issue. How do we, how do we create a system that supports all students? And in fact, what time of day should that be? Because again, if you, if you look at research, and that's what we're doing, we find one of the greatest needs that students have to be successful is how they start their day. We have a free lunch, a breakfast program here, but we have about 25, 30% students that are engaged with that process, okay? Research says that if we can get that up to 80, 85%, it has a tremendous impact on student learning. So, one of the things we're doing with our rails time is trying to figure out, okay, based on data, when should this, what should this period of time in our day be? How do we support students? Going back to students that are economically disadvantaged, there's a pretty good chance the only meals they're getting are here. So, how do we address those needs so that when we start classes at the beginning of the day, they're ready to learn? How much improvement could we have as a high school if we can do that? So, that's one area we're going to address. The second area is the PLC process. And you'll note, what, what do I really believe we need to focus on and what are we focusing on? What do students need to know? How do, how do we take and break down every core area in our, in our high school so that teachers clearly know what we want students to know? And that's right now what we're focusing on in our PLC process. Because if we don't come up with what we want them to know, how in the world are they going to know it? So, again, that is a huge focus in our, in our system right now. The third bullet I have there is to continue to identify ways we can support the ACT process. Again, is it the best assessment tool to determine how well high schoolers are doing? Well, we could sit and argue that all day long, but it doesn't change the fact that's what it is. So, we've, we've engaged upward bound and some other avenues that we can help students prepare for that test. You've seen some articles of, of high schools now solely preparing for that test, teaching to the test, so to speak. Well, I believe, and I truly believe that if we're doing things and we have the curriculum we should have and teachers know clearly what students need to know and students know what they need to know, our scores are going to go up. Supporting professional development. Again, we do that with our, with our, all of our faculty meetings are based on professional development. How do we, how do we better connect with students? We've, we've talked a lot about how we, how do we identify standards and determine what students should know. It's really the, the heart and soul of what we're trying to do in that learning process with teachers. Continue to develop a culture of learning. I talked a lot about that first few times that we talked, the fact that students have to, have to understand the importance of going to school. And that started with, if you remember, you go back in history here of, of my history here anyways, the fact of how important it is that we respect each other, that, that they understand rules and expectations of what we do, that they get here on time. Those are all part of that process of learning. And if they can understand that and we emphasize that, they know they'll walk through the doors what they're doing here is important. And we've made good strides in that, in that area, but we'll continue to work on those things. And the last thing in, one of the most important things, is our block scheduling system. If students are economically disadvantaged, there's probably a pretty good chance they don't have internet at home. And we're a one-to-one school, meaning every, every student has laptop. Well, it's pretty hard to do anything on your laptop and go to your Google Classroom or whatever without access to that process. But even more importantly, there's a good chance that they're not receiving the support they need at home to be able to do what they're, what they need to do academically. So, in a block system, and this is what we've been talking about and this is, this will be the focal point of our, our professional development this year, is how do I teach in a block system effectively and also give time for my students to practice what I want them to understand? Because again, many students that we have here are not going to get that support anywhere else but here. And again, if I'm a math teacher or if I'm not a math teacher, then don't come to me and ask a math question because I'm probably not going to be able to answer it. So, where's the best place, best resource to get that information? In that math class. So, again, trying to create a system, a schedule that supports the needs of all students. So, that's really the, what we're working on in that process. And I'll tell you what, this is the, I don't know how many schools actually have a true block system, but this year we have a true block system. And the reflection that I've had from staff to this point is that they really enjoy it and respect it. And also, feedback I've got from students is they really enjoy the fact that, that they can focus on their classroom work all in one setting. And they have, once again, we have four periods in a day. Questions for me?
Are you, are you adjusting the students' rails time to meet some of their needs depending on where they end up on their rails time? As far as different classes or teachers or places to, if they need extra help, that's giving them that extra time as well to, to complete some of those tasks?
Yes. In fact, I'm glad you asked that question because that's really been the focus in the change of our rails time is that students, students can connect, they now, it used to be that, that they were signed up for where they went. Now, they choose where they need to go. Now, if, if you're academically having some issues, then we're going to choose where you go. In fact, that's one of my daily tasks every day is I take a look especially at those students that are, that are missing the mark and making sure that they are where they need to be to get the support they need. But, but once again, the students that are on the enrichment side, it gives them that opportunity to spend more time with each of their students. Now, we've had to do some tweaking since the beginning of the year because as I, as I told the staff, I mean, we're, you know, we're going to start here, but it's not a perfect system. We've got to continue to look at it and evaluate it and figure out how it better serves our students. And we've been able to do that. So, we've made quite a few changes since the beginning of the year to now and how we do that. And incidentally, that is when our PLC process is too. But now what we've changed is my, my teachers meet about 50 minutes every other week in their PLC. Because what we, we determined as a staff is that, and once again, it's credit to them, hey, my students need more of me. PLC is important, we got to do it, but so are obviously our students. So, so we've been able to adjust that schedule into their credit. They dove right in and figured out, hey, let's, let's make this change and we've done it and been successful. Any other questions?
Julie, I want to loop back around to your question, and this is not a high school specific comment, but it's important to remember on these report cards, whether they're a district report card or a building report card, that academic achievement is based on a three-year average, as is attendance. So, those are some key areas. So, while the, the cut scores that the Department of Public Instruction establishes are, those are decisions that are made in a lane that nobody in this room occupies, what it does do is it gives us trends of data that we're able to take a look at. So, while we look at the, the state scores, those, those are important, but what's more important is the data that this yields for us locally and how we can use that. And I, I want to also be really clear that these report cards are important. They are the only objective measure across the state. It'll be the only measure that you could have some surety that families and educators in Shell Lake and Cumberland and Hayward and Birchwood or in Madison have the same scorecard that they're working off of. So, it is an objective measure, but it's just one measure in a very large set of data that we take a look at here in Spooner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scherz. We'll be moving on to the middle school, school improvement plan presentation.
So, I have with me tonight, three of my fabulous staff members. I have Mr. Amos, who is one of our PE teachers. I have Mrs. Valella, who is our school social worker. And I have Mrs. Young, who is a fifth grade teacher. And Mr. Amos is going to start us off with some PBIS updates.
At the middle school, I am the PBIS Tier One internal coach. So, Mrs. Valella and I kind of work together. She's the Tier Two coach. And this year, we've been working at moving stuff forward. And so, one thing we looked at was rails rallies. We celebrate accomplishments behaviorally, academically, athletically, once a quarter for students, fifth grade through eighth grade, to get together. It gives an opportunity for teachers to recognize kids' behaviors, a great opportunity to recognize those kids in front of their peers. We have provided our students with a tiered way to use their rails tickets that they have earned by allowing all students to purchase items from our school store. Students are given rails tickets for following the Railsway expectations, the- Students are given rails tickets for following the Railsway expectations, the behaviors that are expected of them when they're in school. So, once they accumulate these tickets, they give them to their connections or homeroom teachers and then can purchase items from a school store that Mrs. Valella and Mrs. Cobb do run once a week on Fridays. Mrs. Valella and I are also in the process of going to be putting together an online like catalog order magazine so that the kids would be able to look at that during their connections times to speed up the process of when they come to visit the school store, they could kind of have those items reserved on the side. So it's just more of a pickup. Positive student recognition, postcards home, positive phone calls. So at one of our staff meetings per week or per month, we spend the first five minutes of that meeting before we go into our PLC process in collaborative time, addressing postcards home to students, just encouraging them, recognizing them for some type of behavior that they had throughout the week or throughout the month that we've noticed. We've also encouraged teachers to make positive phone calls home to parents and kind of opening that communication door to them so that when you're calling home, it's not always a negative vibe or a negative feeling, working with the parents more personally and having those conversations so that the parents just don't see, when they see that Spooner phone number from the district, think that it's a negative thing. We also were able to add one paraprofessional to our Tier One team. This just happened about three weeks ago. Jen Swanson joined our team. She is going to be representing the paraprofessionals. So in our meetings that we have at the Tier One level, she will take those notes back and present them to the other paras in our building and be able to bring back any ideas that paras will want to see within our building to our Tier One PBIS team. We have also moved this year to demonstrating with monthly virtues. Instead, so every month, there will be a different focus that teachers during their connections times, they will pick out a virtue. So this month is respect. The email and PowerPoint just went out this morning to all staff members. So the month of December, the connections teachers will use one day a week to talk to their students about respect. They will do different activities with them, talk about what it should look like and how to kind of regulate and hold each other accountable to have respect within our building. Every month, that virtue will change. And as a PBIS Tier One team, we decide that in our monthly meetings, the first month of the first meeting of the month, we will decide what the next month's virtue will be, whether that is by looking at data on office referrals and is there a focus that our students need or that we need to focus on as a staff to present to our students. And this one, we just started our Tier Two, our Tier Two team just put this together. It's a request for assistance form. This will help assist with discussions around the classroom behavior and interventions and the Tier Two modifications that need to be made. Do you want to add anything to that? Mrs. Valella was kind of the one in the Tier Two team that put this together. So if you have questions about that, between her and I, we can try to answer them.
I get to do classroom updates. So right now, all teams are engaged in the PLC process, teams meet weekly formally. And then also, we look at data with our specialists every other week, like our reading specialist and our math specialist, and we look at our in-class assessments in math and ELA especially so that we can move kids for win groups. And then we also meet informally daily in all grade levels, pretty much. Teams are all working on common formative assessments. There's an increase of additional recess and lunch minutes that allows for more physical activity for our students, structured social time for students, and more time for students to eat, which has been really huge this year for our kids. Also, we have increased staff supervision during lunch and recess and in the hallways, which has resulted in fewer behavior incidents and increased opportunities for staff and students to connect and build relationships together during those times. Any questions for me?
So I'm going to talk about the social emotional updates for Spooner Middle School. We gather this data from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Typically, our students, grades six through eighth, take this survey every other year. However, last year, DPI took it over. So instead of skipping a year, they wanted their own fresh data, so they had us do it. And we ended up doing it two years in a row. So that's why you see the 2018 versus 2019 data comparison. So I just grabbed a couple pieces of information to share with you, although the Youth Risk Behavior Survey assesses several, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but several kind of high-risk areas. Again, it's grades six through eight. Every student takes it. However, there is an opt-out opportunity for parents. So we ensure that a passive permission form goes home to every student, allowing parents the opportunity to opt out should they feel like it's something that they wouldn't want their student to take. In 2018, 26.7% of sixth graders, 20% of seventh graders, and 17.5% of eighth graders reported that they have not attended school because they felt unsafe at school. In 2019, the number of students who responded yes for grades six through eight was too small to report. So that would indicate that at those grade levels, we saw a pretty significant decrease. And then 16% of seventh graders reported that they missed school because they felt unsafe. However, in 2019, there was a qualifier of during the past 30 days. So it's not apples to apples. So that may be why we saw the change there, but that was the closest comparison that we could find. In 2019, 74% of sixth graders, 49% of seventh graders, and 43% of eighth graders felt like they belonged at school, concerning to us because we see that trend going downward from sixth grade to eighth grade, as you can see. However, we see in the next piece of information there that 84% of sixth graders, 76% of seventh graders, and 68% of eighth graders have at least one adult at school they can talk to. So it's a bit interesting. They feel maybe that they don't belong at school, however, there's somebody there that they feel connected to, that they feel they can go to if they need to. Across the state, you'll see data that shows that students reported, student-reported anxiety or diagnoses of anxiety is on the rise. It's, we're seeing it as a Tier One universal issue. That's no different at Spooner Middle School. We, our YRBS, our Youth Risk Behavior Survey, showed that 43% of sixth graders, 46% of seventh graders, and 58% of eighth graders self-report having anxiety. The survey does provide just a very short definition of what that is to provide some guidance around how they're responding to that question. In general, the self-reported rates for anxiety and depression were higher for students who had a low sense of school belonging, had experienced bullying, violence, or trauma, had low grades, or had anything else that set them apart from their peers, such as race, class, sexual orientation, and disability. So when we got this data back, it's alarming, but it gives us, it gives us a starting point. The DPI did a really nice job this year of really providing some narrative around the data that'll help us to start to sort of problem solve and plan, create a plan of action around that, around that data.
Questions? What are you, what are you doing to, to decrease the amount of students that feel, that they feel unsafe at school? That's, that's an alarming
It is.
...amount of students
Yep.
...in that grade level.
Yep. So part of it has been the building the relationships so that our students feel safe coming to us and expressing concern. So not only with our students, but our parents too. We want our parents to be able to, you know, talk with their kids about these things in the evenings and feel comfortable calling or coming in and talking to us about those concerns so that relationship piece hopefully opens that door of communication and so we can address the issues as they, as they present themselves. The increased supervision, Michelle's done a nice job of working with staff on ensuring that during transition times, we're really limiting the amount of time that students are alone. That might make them more vulnerable to bullying and some of those things that might make them feel unsafe. Trying to do the best we can to bring as much mental health support as we can into the building. So we work a lot with our community providers on securing, you know, the MOUs and release of information to be able to bring those providers in and meet with our students. That's not something that we as a district like coordinate and pay for, but you would know that probably. But it is something that we work with our parents on arranging. They arrange it with the counselors. And as long as the appropriate paperwork is in place, those counselors can come into the building and work with our students. So perhaps those students who are either, you know, the aggressor or the victim have some support in being able to navigate that.
Do you see, now I'm going to, the after-school program that we've, that last month, I believe, how do you see that playing into this? Do you see it meeting needs of students and enough students?
I hope so. It's a, it's a little hard because it, each session, I think we can have like up to eight students
Okay.
...for each eight-week session. So it does, it does target a very small number of students. However, we can run up to three cycles per school year. So if it's something that we can carry on, I could see, you know, the opportunities being far greater. This year, you know, at best, I'll probably be able to meet 16, but that's 16 kids we wouldn't have met before. So, and you know, we're going to be able to use data and work with our families to identify like who are those kids that are at the highest risk? And then also making sure that they would, you know, mesh well in a group setting. I wouldn't put a fifth or a sixth grader in with a, you know, probably a seventh and eighth, so we might have to do some, have some discussions around that. But it's an awesome program. I just went to the training before break.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So take a little bit of time to talk about what's going really well in our building and then some challenges and some solutions to those challenges, and then what kind of support might we ask for? So in addition to the strengths on the previous slides, retention of staff has led to strong teams in our building. Also, I want to say thank you for approving additional adult support in our building in terms of paraprofessionals. We've seen, this is anecdotal right now, but we've, I've seen a decrease in the amount of major behaviors in the building because there are more adults there that can build relationships with those really high-need kids. And when those relationships are present, we see amount, amounts of large behaviors decrease. We've had more participation from our staff in PBIS Tier One and Tier Two. And we've really worked on sharing the leadership this year in terms of having everybody have a voice, at least in some way, on one of our action teams. So some examples of that might be like being a member of building leadership team or the family engagement committee or the safety team and so on. Everybody has a role somewhere. I'm going to pass it off to Brian, and he's going to talk about some of the challenges.
A couple of the big challenges that we've faced or that are facing is the, what Ashley just talked about with Youth Risk Behavior Survey and that mental health needs that our students, you know, are asking for, that we need to provide to them. Working to address the PLC needs, grade-level team needs, and student needs through revised building schedule for next year.
So some of the things that we're doing to try and address these challenges are partnering with parents, county providers, law enforcement through RightTrack and school liaison officers, mental health providers to help students access services they need. Teachers are working hard to connect with all students, giving extra time to our at-risk students in particular. And then we are meeting after school to learn about the PLC process, looking at revised schedule options that offer solutions to meeting our collaboration needs during the day and those kinds of things.
So the last column, support, what does the school need from the, from the district to overcome the challenges? One thing that has come up is some, either additional professional development days focused around vertical team collaboration and curriculum alignment, or utilizing the professional development days that we have to, to focus on, on that initiative. And there's a lot of, I think our staff sees a lot of, a lot of really great potential in the vertical alignment, but it's, like we've talked before, kind of having the time to do that. So really making the most of those professional development days. A coordinator to help organize and/or reach out to mental health providers to ensure that they have MOUs, insurance, and the correct licensing on file with the district. I think as a student services team, we work hard on that. Caitlin is a really great partner in that as well. But there, we know that there are providers out there that could be helping our students that we may not know about, or we may not have time in the regular day to be able to reach out to and do all the coordinating. So we talked about maybe a coordinator position to kind of be the keeper of all of that, as well as doing some outreach. And then someone who's specifically assigned to help with accessing mental health grants by helping to write and apply for them. We know that there are a lot of grants out there that can offer money and other resources, training around some of the mental health needs that we've identified and our students have helped us identify. But again, it's, it's hard to find the time as a student services group while we're also meeting the variety of needs. And our teachers are doing a lot to provide the academic support that our students need. So if there was opportunity to work with a grant writer or somebody that could help us access some of those resources, that would also be very helpful. And then a staff member to help staff address mental or behavioral needs in-house. Other districts have actually hired a clinician to come in throughout the week, and they would have an assigned caseload. So we talked about what that might look like at Spooner.
Just want to say thank you to the three of you for being here tonight. We just have the formal goals and the strategies and the measures of how we're going to try to get at these goals. So our first goal is that we will increase the use of formative assessment to inform instruction to increase student achievement. So we've talked already about a lot of the strategies tonight. How we're measuring this is through a teacher's survey. And so our teachers took a survey that, they reported that a total last year, all teachers combined, that they, they collaborated a total of 129 times during the 18, 19 school year around formative assessment. So our goal is to increase that. Our next SMART goal would be to work together to create an environment that supports student needs during unstructured times. So, Mr. Melton, this gets at your question that you asked earlier. And we've, we've kind of talked through the strategies already, but last year, we had 213 total referrals in the hallway. This year, we have 35 so far. And if we were to continue, we'd be on that same pattern, we would, we would have a reduction of over 70 for the year. Our last SMART goal is to provide families with individualized academic feedback each grading period. So last year, we focused a lot on the communication piece, and you'll see those strategies. We're continuing those strategies, but we're adding to it. I'm going to click on this and just kind of give you a glimpse at what it looks like. Some individualized feedback that goes a little bit beyond the report card where we, where we use this as a tool to talk to parents about star reading and star math and where kids are in term, overall in terms of ELA, math, science, and social studies, what services they're receiving during their what I need time. Are they in an enrichment group or in a targeted group or in a, or in a tiered intervention? So teachers are using this at conferences as a way to engage parents in conversations around where students are at academically. If families are unable to make it to conferences, this is mailed home along with the report card. So, let me switch back to this. So every student received a compact for quarter one and will continue to do so this year. And we are on track with all of the rest of our postcards, phone calls, our newsletters, and our reminds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and information. Thank you for the presentation and information. We'll be moving on to Item E of Elementary and Secondary Education Act Accountability. Mr. Scherz.
So another acronym. This used to be ESSA, and now it's Elementary and Secondary Education Act. And this is basically about our federal funding, in particular, our Title money. And one of the things that I'm doing tonight is giving you some information that I need to, as part of our, certainly with federal funding, there's all sorts of things that we need to do. We have a team together that we're working together to make sure that we're taking care of all the things we're accountable for in order to receive the federal funding. So one of the things I'm sharing with you tonight is Parents' Right to Know. The information is required to be on our website, and it is. If you click on our website where it says "About Us", you'll get a dropdown, and it will indicate Parents' Right to Know. And you click on that, and you will not only get information of what parents have a right to know, but also our state and federal report cards so that everyone has access to that. So I'm just going to read to you tonight what Parents' Right to Know is. And again, I don't know what they, you know, ESSA was really easy to say, but now it's SE. So I'm going to call it ESEA. I direct schools and districts to notify parents about four key requirements of Title I program. And all three of our schools are Title I schools now. The professional qualifications of teachers and paraprofessionals who instruct. Notification if your child's teacher is not certified under Wisconsin licensing system. Individual report card that lets you know how your child is progressing. Term report cards, local and state assessment results. District and building-specific state report cards. Notification that the school has entered a school improvement status. Requesting information. Parents have the right to request opportunities for meetings to formulate suggestions and to participate as appropriate in decisions about the education of their children.
Thank you.
Yes.
Receiving and placing that on file. We'll be moving on. Were there any questions? All right. To social media commenting guidelines. Mr. Miller.
Okay. Excuse me, I'm fighting a cold here tonight. Social media guidelines. We are proposing these tonight to refer to our social media sites, Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram that we use. The purpose of those sites, of course, is to communicate information to our community and highlight the celebrations that we have of staff, students, and community, school, district-related accomplishments. As part of those social media sites, I think everybody is probably aware that it's always been that people can publicly comment on posts that we make. It is not an option that we can turn off or control from that aspect, just disallowing. And because of that, we have always encouraged and reminded our public to, you know, welcome. Comments are encouraged and welcome, but they need to be appropriate and constructive to the subject matter that is being posted on our sites. So having a set of social media guidelines serves a couple of purposes, primarily to remind our public and our community some guidance of what is appropriate and how to keep those posts constructive. So the guidelines that are proposed in that memo and handout that you have basically remind the public of what it is to comment in that and center around nine criteria that range on a variety of different areas that basically come down to things that would be pretty noticeable in terms of being obscene, offensive, and citing violence, safety, promoting things like advertising, political campaigns, being out of context, et cetera. When posts, if they're ever made, or something that fall into these types of criteria, these are the kind of things that need to be addressed, possibly removed, depending on the nature of the post. And having that criteria out there just serves to educate our community of what to do to keep their posts constructive and appropriate to avoid falling into the situation. There's a second benefit to having social media guidelines that we have as a district, and that revolves around the fact that these posts that we have and the comments that go with them are considered public record in the state of Wisconsin, and as such are potentially subject to open records law and retention policies. And to that end, we did put a solution in earlier this summer that meets those requirements. It's our Archive Social Solution that basically keeps us in compliance. But having those guidelines serve to complement this in terms of providing reasons of why something may have been removed if it's ever questioned or requested, and that. So to that end, basically what we are proposing here tonight is looking at adopting some social media guidelines that is presented to you. If they're adopted, you post those guidelines on the website as a reference for it, and then periodically remind or mention guidelines when appropriate. As far as, excuse me, periodically post them as example, like prior to a board meeting or something like that. We encourage your comments. Please keep them constructive, appropriate, associate. Maybe as a reminder if we get something that starts to head in a direction that might be out of control. That's essentially what's being proposed tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Do we have consensus to move this forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
We'll be moving on to reviewing the district-created committee of the whole policy.
If you'll recall, earlier in 2019, when the board went through the trial period of the committee of the whole, made the decision that this would be a format going forward, that impacted the policies that we had on the book and were in force at that time regarding the committee structure. So what you have in front of you is a draft or a revision to the policy that Kaitlyn has worked with our Neola rep, Chris Petrito, to refine. So I had asked that you review that and that you consider moving that forward to your regular meeting agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Do we have general consensus to move this forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you. We'll be moving on to discuss recombining the school calendar committee.
So the intent will be to have names for the calendar committee for your consideration to appointment to these board committees for your regular meeting here in a couple weeks.
Okay. The reason I asked for this to be put on, taken off our agenda at the last regular board meeting and moved forward was because of, is this okay to?
Go ahead. Please do, yeah.
Just the discussion that we had at our admin board retreat and just the potential for putting data-driven decisions to best meet needs of students into forming our calendar for the next two years. And I wanted to just pause and see if that meant that we shouldn't do the committee, or how that would or could change to best meet needs of students. If we can have a conversation about that, I guess.
I would agree that it's important to look at the data that supports decisions that are made and that's included in any decisions that are made. Any members of the committee would need to have that, keep that data in mind, have it available, and use that to make decisions that will help our students be as successful as possible.
Do you think that that, I mean, do we need to change the format of how we come about the calendar? Or can that be incorporated into our committee?
I think that, yeah, I just, I want to applaud the board's consideration of some deeper discussion around the formation of school calendars. And just also want to reiterate the fact that our practice in the district has been to work on calendars for two years out. So you're not under any great time constraint to have this conversation. I would encourage you, as we look, to have another board administrator retreat early in 2020, that perhaps that could be a discussion item. And then we would, so in the meantime, we would put on hold those efforts to form a committee and to begin that committee work. To wait and see what sort of items that we identify as main areas to be addressed in this process would be in our, again, early 2020 retreat.
And that would be okay to put this on hold until?
Yes, it would. Yes.
Okay. Do we have support to do that as a board?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Does that need to reappear?
No. No, it does not. No. We'll put that as an agenda item as we start to mock up the retreat agenda.
Thank you. All right. We'll be moving on to discuss the proposed Membership of Support Staff, Teacher, and Administrator Compensation Task Force.
Looking to bring membership recommendations forward for your consideration at the December 17th meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. And we will be moving on to Item to discuss proposed membership of employee handbook. That's the same as coming in as?
Looking to bring membership recommendations for your consideration at the December 17th meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Are those recommendations coming directly from you, from the administrators, or how are?
So what we've done is broken out per task force and committee what the structure's been, what the allocation of slots have been, and what the employee classes have been. So principals will be bringing forward membership recommendations from their respective buildings. Mrs. Grindell and I will be putting recommendations together from the district level, staff, and collectively, that's what will come forward to you for consideration.
Thank you. Thanks. And moving on to discuss the superintendent evaluation. Do you want to discuss it, or would you like me to? Okay. So we're going to be using the same template that we've used for the last two years, I believe. Along with that, this time will come job description that we recently, this fall, approved for our superintendent position, and just an outline, again, of our strategic priorities and our strategic plan so that when you're evaluating, Dr. Azlen, you can have that information with you. I think that it's going to be going out when, Kaitlyn?
Sometime this week.
Sometime this week. And they'll have an end date. To get it back to me, I will get that information to Kaitlyn, and she'll compile it. And then we'll be having a meeting in January. Closed session to review. I just want to remind our board that this is a main part of our responsibility as board members. So please make an effort to do a diligent job in completing the evaluation and in a timely manner. Thank you for your help on that. Any other questions on that or discussion? All right. Item M was the 30, 60, 90-day planning documents. Did anyone have any questions or comments on these?
No, but I do have a comment. I really do like this format. It's very nice to be able to look per school, district-wide, and see the different things that are going on in the district. And it's in, you know, just a touch of a keyboard, and it's nice to know what's going on. And then if there's any questions, you can certainly go to that specific building and ask those questions. So kudos to everyone that's putting that together. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And again, that's open to the public on board docs as well. We'll receive and place that on file. We've already covered the last two items of our original agenda. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.